Hello, everyone. It's my first one chair, so please bear with me.
It feels like you've done so much already.
I know. Okay, welcome. Can I have someone call me to order for February 8?
You do that.
I call. I'm gonna go meet you for February 8, 2022 to order for the Travel Council Advisory Board. First up on the agenda.
You just go to the welcome conflicts of interest.
Okay, so I'll be a second. Got it. Welcome, or you said that twice. Any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or sporting communication? Next, citizens to be heard. We have one or two.
If y'all want to go as a presentation. Why don't we just open it up?
Yeah.
Where should I?
Maybe, I mean, if you come over this way, the camera will find you. This is the mic. So if you want it, you can just sit right here if you want it.
It will find you.
Yeah, watch.
That's scary.
So is this gonna work?
Yeah, if you just sit right here.
Oh, it's it.
I mean, you can do whatever you want, really.
Well, I'll stand.
Okay.
Okay, so. Mary's got important things to say at all times. My name is John Weisheim, and I've lived in Moab since 1986. I've been a river guide all this time. I am also on the board of Canyonlands Natural History Association. And I'm here to share some information with you. And those board members and I wrote this letter to Grand County Commission. That county administration may have gotten it. I'd like to give you this for the public record. And immediately following that, and without any. Bureau of Land Management also wrote a letter to the county commission. I'd like to give you that for the record. And I have two more. This is a letter from Reston Coe, who at the time worked in recreation for the Bureau of Land Management. He too was part of the history. And he wrote a write-up. It's a three, two and a half page write-up of the Moab Information Center that I'd like to give you. And then finally, this is a letter from Larry Frederick, who used to work for the National Park Service. He's now retired. In fact, he employed my wife, Zetley Weisheim, doing the reservation system. And he wrote his memories of the history of the Moab Information Center. As a river guide, I was very much part of this. I actually gave one of the very first talks at the Moab Information Center. And I bet you I gave a total of 10 talks about the river guide, talking about natural history and stuff. But the main reason why it was developed was is that the business owners were being disturbed by visitors. You know, like, can I use your restroom? You know, like, instead of buying a T-shirt, all they really wanted was to use. And they would ask questions. And that was why the business community actually was the main emphasis in building this. And in fact, the man who owned that property, his name was Fred Miller. He was the guy who, it used to be a store, and it used to be a gas station. And he actually reduced the price and sold it through the county. He had a lease price. CIB money was involved. Smith Alde took care of it. It's now free and clear and owned by the county. Now, as far as the administrative details, I think Roxanne would be better at that. But I'm here to tell you that that it was the business community that wanted this more than anybody. Well, we would, we think that if it's not there, it's gonna put a burden on the travel council. So we think we're supportive of doing this even at the latest. And I'm done. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Roxanne Bierman. I'm the executive director for Canyonlands Natural History Association. We're the operating partner at the MEC. We partner with the county, the Forest Service, the BLM, and the National Park Service. We also get some financial support from the city for the bathrooms. So I am here with more numbers, but I just wanted to start too with all of the information that is dispensed through the Moab Information Center. It's amazing what the work that they do there. If you look up TripAdvisor, it's just heartwarming to see all the people who are so thankful that they had a place to go to ask somebody some questions. And sometimes people's vacation is disrupted. They can't plan in advance. They need to know what else there is to do. And I think it's essential to have a centralized location for information. We don't have a Chamber of Commerce that dispenses that information. What we have is Moab Information Center. In a normal year, about 200,000 people walk in there. And we are often asking the county for some more money to support the MEC. It costs about $350,000 a year to run it. We get about $100,000 from our partners, and then we have sales in there. And we try to be sensitive to downtown businesses and not sell Moab souvenirs and that sort of thing and compete. We just need to generate some money so that we can help pay the bills, because we pay for everything there, including paying rent to the county. So we do get money through the Travel Council every year. This year it'll be $38,000. And we pay $27,600 back to the county. That money that comes to us from the Travel Council, originally when the visitor center started, every partner contributed personnel. They had an employee there. Well, that got very confusing, very difficult, hard to manage. So CNHA said, we'll hire all the employees and train them and take care of them. You guys pay us for somebody in lieu of sending somebody. Well, those payments haven't kept up with the cost of an employee. But what we're getting from the Travel Council right now is equivalent about one employee. And for that, you get a tremendous amount of outreach for the community, promotion of local businesses, support of the public lands, all of the messages that we're constantly trying to get out there about responsible recreation, a lot of safety messages. I've been in there listening to these folks talk to somebody about, please don't take your 10-year-old on a bicycle ride this afternoon. It's gonna be 105 degrees. You know, these are just things that you don't find when you pick up your phone and look for information. So anyway, I am concerned that our lease is up at the end of this year and that the county may have some other ideas for how they could use that building. I'm not quite sure where people are supposed to go if there isn't a MEC. And I just think that we ought to think long in heart before we decide that we don't need it anymore. Every resort community's got a visitor center. I don't think we're to the point yet. We might be someday to where brick and mortar visitor centers aren't needed anymore. I don't think we're there yet. And we are very concerned about our visitors. We're concerned when we issue OHV permits, we make sure that they get all the messages about local regulations. And a lot of that happens at the MEC. So anyway, I just wanted to be here to let people know what's potentially happening there and to help inform you about what really happens at the MEC and how that gets paid for.
Thanks so much, Roxanne.
Isn't Archer's also putting some rangers at the MEC this?
Yes, that's a good question. One of the things this next year with timed entry that we're all crossing our fingers and hoping goes really well is that the Park Service is going to put a ranger or two at the MEC every day to help the visitors who arrive and don't have reservations. So once again, it's a centralized place. It's somewhere for people to be directed who are frustrated or don't understand the process, and they can get some help there. We do a lot of things for all of our partners out of the Moab Information Center.
And also any questions?
I think, I think the thing is awesome. I echo, you know, that it needs to stick around.
Yeah. The $38,000 isn't the budget, so that should be no problem.
But it's the least that.
Well, one of the things that I have heard said from the county is, how can we make the MEC self-sustaining so that they don't need a subsidy from the county? I don't consider what we get from the county a subsidy.
Right.
We're not, you pay for a service. You pay for what you're gonna get there. And I don't understand why the county doesn't think that there's some obligation through TRT funds to pay for a visitor center.
Yeah.
And so when it comes to me that, well, how are you going to not have to come to us for this $38,000? It's like, we're not asking a whole lot. We take a loss every year. If everybody thinks that we're making money at the MEC, we're not. So CNHA usually covers all of those losses. But we feel strongly enough in support of our partners that it's necessary, and we're a nonprofit. We have a mission. So not making money is okay. We just want to make sure that we're getting the message out there and supporting our partners.
Awesome.
And I'll throw out too that we get an extra $7,000 a year from the Travel Council for keeping the restrooms open late.
Yep.
Just a question for, for one of V Prime downtown lots, could be said that it's a little bit underdeveloped. Are you also attached to the physical form of the current space, or as long as you're providing the functions, is that what you're primarily concerned about?
I'm not sure if we're really attached to the physical format. We're attached to the location. I think it's important to have a centralized location, but if we don't have that size, then possibly we don't have a store. We don't have an auditorium where we do do lecture series every year. A lot of locals come to those. So if we have less space, we could still dispense information. But if we have no store, then there's even more money that we can't generate on our own.
That's not what I'm talking about. There's a bunch of landscaping, and there's tremendous vertical development potential on that lot. And so all that could, the MEC could potentially be there, and then there was additional commercial residential development there that could potentially eliminate the need for additional funding or just make the budget is a concern. There's a lot of, it seems like revenue potential from that lot in addition to all the existing functions of the MEC and perhaps more.
Sorry, you're talking about like making it a two-story building?
Well, three-story.
Yeah.
At least up to three stories is allowed downtown.
But potentially redeveloping the stays to add value to that particular parcel, maintaining its public function, and increasing revenue generation and additional money.
I have no idea. I'm just saying that there's, like, you don't see really any other lot that's run by a private business that has landscape. Fill up the lot lines, and that's what private businesses do. And so just from a, the budget is the issue. There's a lot of potential there. Maintain the existing functions, but could add to it.
Yeah, Sharon.
I know when they were doing the parking lot study, they had actually set possibly putting a two-story parking area in that where the parking lot is. One, we need the parking lot. We can't be expanding back, because, I mean, just people coming into the, into the MEC alone, sometimes it'll fill up the parking lot.
Yeah.
We let buses turn around in there. We let buses, you know, people, they'll drop people off and then come pick them back up. As far as just personal opinion, I think the landscaping in front of the MEC is a huge benefit to the city. I don't think we should be going clear out to the road with anything there. Lots of things get, I mean, just, I mean, the minimum of watching parades, if you've ever been down there, went with the light parade or even the homecoming parade, that MEC grounds is packed with people watching the parades. We have, we let the Mark do their sidewalk chalk art contest or whatever in there every year. That is a gathering spot for people. And I, I would really hate to see development go from the front of the MEC all the way out and take out all that landscaping. That would be, I think that would be detrimental to the, just the look of downtown, just personally. And that's not me being from the MEC, but me personally, I, I think it's an oasis. We get a lot of people that come and eat their lunch on our grass, that are walking around town. You know, they might not even come into the MEC, but they're using the MEC grounds to have a little picnic with their family. The kids are running around. Everything. But I had never thought about maybe going up a story or two.
Mary, having the MEC on the bottom floor.
I know where this concern came from.
Okay.
Is we, as we know, it's a small chamber that has to hold so many people. We don't have room. Grant, the county needs to improve its facility. And we'd like to do so by not going into debt, not taking out a big debt. And so we decided to study all the land we own in the county. And it would have been negligent of us not to consider the MEC. We need to put that in the MEC. I can assure you, it's not gonna be sold. It's going to be there. Nothing's going to happen quickly, maybe 10, 15, 20 years from now. But it's not something the county is considering doing at this point. We will probably be selling some land, but it won't be the MEC. We, and one thing we did talk about a lot was if it just became that that was the best way to go, because it is the most valuable piece of property we own by far. We wanted to protect and maintain a green area downtown. We felt that's, I mean, it's nice to have a green area. If anything, improve it. Maybe have some benches, maybe, you know, we talked about that. But John and Roxanne, I think you can take brush, I don't think you need to be spending a lot of energy and concern about at this time that the MEC is like this, that the county is buying selling it. We're going to figure out some way, we're even looking at, maybe this time it would be better to take a loan out. We don't know. We are going to be either selling land or taking a loan. But at this time, we're not thinking about selling any land again.
Is there anything that the Travel Council Board wants to do on this issue, letter, support, anything like that, or?
I think we are going to be negotiating. And it is really expensive for the county to maintain the Travel Council, the MEC, you know, like they do. I mean, it's just expensive, you know, maintaining the building is expensive. And but yet it is an important aspect. So we might be asking for more money for the lease, but I don't know. That's all in the mix. Nothing, nothing started that the lease is up. Maybe it'll stay the same. You know, we'll all get together and look at what we have and where we're at, what's gonna be the best for the community, because we're serving the citizens. And we're not, we're a nonprofit as well. We don't want to make money, but we also need to stay in the black. Just like the museum, costs a lot of money. You know, you know, a lot of things you do is elected officials, and that's our job. Part of our job is to provide for our citizens places that enhance their life and make their life more valuable. Trails, that's what we have. Swimming center, that's why we have so many things that are there. Costs money for the city, costs money for the county, but they're important. Our parks are important. And the MEC is important. And I think the area in front of the MEC, I agree with you, the grass area is nice. My city would be improved. But unless you want to spend your time worrying about this and going to meetings, I think I know you could just not go.
And I'll just say, full support of the MEC. I know that I've learned more and more about chambers and, and what they do in other places. And a lot of chambers that do, they are combined with the tourism. They use, they do use that TRT money for their information centers and to promote and kind of do what we have here separated chamber from county. But, but to me, it seems like the perfect use of, of those funds, and especially if we're trying to focus on education, I think that's the perfect place to do it. So.
That seems to make sense to me. And before we totally let this go, so I don't have to spend any more worrying about it, that Mary is, we're already losing money there. So if the rent goes up substantially in a new lease, then we'll be looking for more money.
You know, we might be coming to the Travel Council and say, next year, put more budget money in their budget for that. I mean, we're, you know, we'd like to pencil it out better so that it works for the county.
And I wouldn't be surprised if there's a weird, you know, the money coming from the MEC and rent has to be used a certain way, and the TRT money has to be used a certain way, even if it's offsetting. I don't know the context, but I'm wondering maybe that's.
We can talk to some of the other agencies, you know, but, you know, it will be up, and there will be negotiations. But I don't see the county wanting to. I don't think, I don't think there's any, in the near future, there's certainly any change in the MEC.
Yeah, Sharon.
Is there, as far as our budgeting goes, and because TRT money is earmarked for visitor centers?
Yeah.
Is there any way we could use, you know, because I know the county and the citizens don't want us advertising so much. Can we use some of our advertising money for stuff at the MEC? I mean, like, putting it into the MEC, because we are giving out the messaging. You and I talked about putting those videos up on the TV in the MEC. Is that a way we could get more?
Yeah. I mean, I see the MEC as a place where responsible recreation messaging is gonna happen 100%. I mean, it already is. So I see that as a, you know, if right now we're basically paying operation costs with that $38,000. I think there's definitely could be a conversation, especially as, you know, we're forecasting TRT to go next year and.
Essentially, TRCC also, right? Can I be?
TRCC?
I don't know what TRCC is. I think it has more uses than TRT.
I don't know if that includes, anyway.
Yeah.
Visitor centers are used with convention centers in terms of the percentage of money that can be used.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
I appreciate y'all. You're more than welcome to stick around if you'd like, but we won't blame you for not either. Yeah, of course.
Nice to meet you.
She's been getting a cootie for years, and now she's retired.
Okay, Jenny? Well, I guess Jason ran to the bathroom, so maybe we'll wait a second. Of course. Thanks, Roxanne. So it seems that at least a member of the body is using the bathroom. Jason threw up to the bathroom, so I think we'll wait just a second.
Congratulations on the summit.
Thanks, Mary.
The time I was there was very, very nice. I went and did some, you know, networking and walking around.
Well, we can go right into the next thing, review and discussion of the Canyonlands. This is something.
Did we do it last month? We didn't do anything.
Well, we had the January meeting, but we haven't had the time to put the meeting minutes together.
Okay.
They'll be eventually on the agenda, but Ben and I and Melissa and Robert's brains are melting into soup. So we're, once we're done with this, we'll like catch up, but.
It was really nice.
Yeah, any other feedback or thoughts while we're here, Chanel or Daniel, while you're online, if you have any remarks about the business summit? I know you were both there.
Yeah, August, I really, I liked it. I thought it was really well done, as well as I liked the turnout, the networking opportunities, and all the discussions I felt were very lively, but also very respectable input was received as well.
Awesome.
The one comment I would share, the final panel of the day unfortunately kind of got ignored.
Yeah.
And I think, I think if we had rearranged them to go before the housing panel, we would have had everybody there at the end.
I totally agree, and Ben and I mentioned that at the end of the day as well.
I just had to get some work done.
Well, it's Sharon's fault. We determined that. We can move on.
Sharon liked that one.
I think though, with the last, like, the last presentations with the last panel too, some of the questions were sidetracked, I felt like. So some of them were very prolonged answers, which lost people's attention as well. So I think if they had the questions ahead of time, would they just need to know to keep it more brief instead of longer, longer answers, because it loses people.
Totally agreed. Thank Chanel. Yeah.
What was that one? She, was it emcee the last one?
Zeeman Zal.
She didn't have some slideshows for her first one, so I was a little confused. I don't know if it was like a computer error, but like when she first spoke before lunch, it's kind of looking around like, is it supposed to go up? It was quick.
Right, yeah.
Very quickly.
The intention there, I'll just briefly speak to you. She runs the Center for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging at EDC Utah. And we wanted to bring her on to emcee this last event and had some conversations about, you know, kind of isolating the kind of diversity, equity, inclusion language to this last thing. At the end of the day, we wanted to bring that up front and make it a part of the bigger conversation. So that's why she was included as that first panel. But yeah, I guess not having a visual aid made it difficult to understand what she was talking about.
Yeah.
So that's good to know. Cool.
I heard some really good things with socializing and networking and all of that. There was just kind of, people at the table were really good to be able to talk to. And definitely, I heard a little bit of, if we're going to focus on policy and planning, then we need to make sure that we have our commissioners and our council members there, which Mary was there and gave, just to, and Jason, sorry. Just to make sure that if that, that they're kind of a part of that conversation, because it's like, there was some really good conversation, and like, now what do we do?
Right.
So just having some decision makers looking in on that conversation would be good if that's the focus. And then just a couple of, I mean, there were a few people that were looking for some more like marketing type or like, how do I, I don't know, I guess just personal business.
Stories.
Stories, tips, that kind of thing. But all in all, I heard really good.
Sweet. Awesome. Well, we're already exhausted from it, but we'll do it again at some point.
I just echo like what you said, like, I learned a ton of stuff, you know, at it, you know, I was pretty, like, I was like, it was interesting, you know, from during like the housing thing, you know, and from like, you know, I kind of wish that there would have been more government representation there at it and stuff. Because I was sitting there, especially during the housing thing, you know, it was, it was great to be there and listening to people, you know, if you were like, you know, because I, you know, I got things like, well, the cities did these ADUs, you know, it was like, you know, how do we pay for these? How do we, how do we afford, you know, this stuff, you know, or, or these are the other issues that I hadn't really thought about. So it was interesting having this whole room full of people, you know, and then throwing like, well, this is what we're running into. This is what we're seeing, you know, and I was like, oh. You know, it was a great forum, you know, for, for hearing like issues that, that I don't think that you hear in your normal day stuff.
Even for me, business-wise, because we kind of always push like, well, businesses, maybe you can try to provide the housing. And then hearing some of the stories about what happened lawsuit-wise, I mean, just some of the kind of horror stories of when businesses do get involved with renting to their own employees and, you know, disgruntled employees and.
Well, just put another layer as the issues of how, and then what's the guy from Crescent View, you know, was great, you know, he was super good. And you know, and I was just like, oh, this is way good, so.
We did not tape it.
Two points. One, along with everyone else, CNHA actually just had, Friday and Saturday, had their board retreat. And one of the items that were brought up was housing.
Yeah.
Because we're looking at and trying to figure out how we would be able to do housing, not only for our seasonal staff, but for the seasonal staff for the Park Service, be able in the Forest Service.
Yeah.
So that's, it was really good to be in on those conversations, and I'm glad Roxanne was there too, to be able to hear, hear the different things, you know, because we're, we're on the ground floor trying to figure out how we're gonna do this.
Right.
And then two, it was very obvious how much work you guys, the Travel Council and the Economic Development Board or whatever, how much work you guys put into it. And I have to, Ben, I wish he was here.
He's taking me after you're not.
He did amazing, making sure everything stayed on schedule and making sure everyone knew where they needed to be. It is good. So kudos to you guys and to you guys.
Yeah.
I know, right? Because I know like during the housing part, a lot of people are like asking the chamber to do stuff. Like, did you feel like you have notes or like that you were pointed out or? Like, did you feel like you have notes or like that you were pointed out or did you feel like you got a bunch? So I, I mean, I think it was as far as the chamber goes, there was just a lot of how can we get the information out? And the chamber was like, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of, yeah, so reaching out to HOSU and some of the, they, they were working on some information that they want to put through the chamber. But, but as far as I could tell, that was kind of the biggest, our chamber chats and communication and all of that, we're more than happy to facilitate all of that conversation. Do you feel like you're, you weren't singled out or like you have a better follow-up? I mean, I don't feel like singled out in particular.
What's that? City and the county got.
Well, it helps when Jason is quite literally the city councillor to moderating the session. Whose fault is this? Oh, mine.
Oh, it's my fault. I guess I will.
That's good. I do like the idea though of what the timed entry and for the businesses that have CUAs.
Yes, that.
That would be so valuable to the MEC.
Yeah.
To have the best of companies that have CUAs that, because we get people all the time that want to go in on a tour. Which, and I'm so excited with the timed entry, they have the conditional use permit authorization.
So to get into our.
So they don't need timed entry if you're with a tour. And you know, it's going to be so much nicer because all last year, every time they would close the park, they would say, well, can I get in on a tour? And it's like, no, tours can't even get in right now.
Yeah.
So it's going to be.
That was the, that was the, when I spoke with Senator Lee, you can do it all in a half of all the time. That was what was the selling point, was that people, tours couldn't make, couldn't do tours because of the lines.
Really?
I said, yeah, so businesses are losing that.
So I think that, I mean, kind of to their point, I don't know that I want to be solely responsible for knowing who can get in and who can't and on what, like if it was revoked or not revoked, but if it was on some kind of self-reporting like.
I'm sure the NPS can give you a list.
I want to be on this list.
They can't, they can't share it.
Right. Were you there?
The NPS cannot.
No, I was, I was, I was doing my own session.
Well, they, I don't, they might give me a list internally.
I didn't say they, they did not, they didn't, they didn't want to manage a list.
Right, yes.
Because they didn't want to be responsible for who was on that list and who got their permits provoked, revoked, you know, or something. So they didn't, they didn't want to be managing it or responsible for the information that they would have to be sending out.
Wrong list got out then.
Right.
But we could definitely provide a place, so we'd say on websites, maybe even on Discover Moab, that could be updated in real time. And it's really on the business.
Yeah.
To, if you want to be on that list, get yourself on that list.
Well, I mean, we already have, for all of our listings, you have a filter based off of, if you go hiking or climbing, we can just add Arches CUA or Arches Tour as a filter. I mean, we'd have to work with businesses obviously to update that, but that, I don't think technologically that'd be all that difficult. Don't you think, Robert? Okay. Love it when Robert says that.
I am right now actually, was just designing, you know, because we have the sandwich boards that go outside. And you know, usually both sides are the same and it says, this is our hours and this is what we do inside here. So I actually designed it so the one side will be that. And then the other side is all going to be timed entry information.
Nice.
With a QR code on it and everything. So people will be able to, even if we're not open, we're going to, we're going to leave those outside. Normally we bring them in when we're closed, just so they don't get damaged. We're going to leave them outside so people, no matter what time of day they walk by, they can get that information.
Well, well, while we're doing this, I would recommend that maybe the chair moves us on the agenda so we can get to that.
Perfect. Next is review and discussion of proposed strategy to develop an economic development master plan.
So I put a proposal up and my goal was to talk about it today. We also talked about it earlier today with our kind of economic development boards. And more or less the conclusion was that this was half-baked and we needed to talk the planning and zoning office first and make sure that we were in line with the general plan and strategic plan, kind of before we get really into it. But the, the main core of it, and we can, we can still look at the document kind of as I proposed it. That the main intention is, and this could also be called, you know, a master plan task force or something like that. But having a separate group that is focused on planning for economic development. Call a steering committee too, that is separate from kind of executing this year's activities. And only kind of brings in the folks, so you know, the chair of the board, the chair of the other board. To kind of guide the planning process for our whole department as a whole, including tourism, including diversification, including film, all of the above. And, you know, starting to sketch out what do we want to get out of a plan, including, you know, interviews with all stakeholders, community engagement and establishing goals, long-term measurable objectives and benchmarks for those things. Ways to do internal data tracking and external data reporting. And then bringing in some kind of subject matter experts to make sure that, you know, we're covering all of our bases. So I think generally this is going in the right direction, but I've had some, some difficulties trying to think of how to build the planning flight at the same time. So I think where we're, we're going, what I'm leaning towards is for the boards that we already have, including this one. Focusing on execution of activities that we've kind of already got in the pipeline. And then I'm going to kind of work to create a parallel process with folks that are involved in these kind of 2022 programs. So that they know what we're working on to start doing the longer term planning. And kind of do something that is ideally more live, actionable and less a document that sits and does nothing. That's the goal in, in general sketches. And Kaylin, yes, we would have the city be involved. Any other kind of general notes on this, knowing this isn't kind of really a plan that I'm going to like run with tomorrow?
The next day.
Okay, what?
Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, any thoughts online, Daniel or Chanel, before I move on, or before Jenny moves us on, I should say?
Nothing for me.
Okay.
Nothing for me either.
Thanks, y'all.
On to the next one, review discussion of 2022 priorities. Specifically the two things I mentioned, just sent that email to everyone about Arches timed entry. I'll start. I came up with some ideas and I also talked to Kate yesterday at the networking event at Dewey's. The airport board meeting, Andy Uslier? So I mentioned at the airport board meeting yesterday too, that like if we have a poster from National Park Service at the airport. And she said she has some or just to kind of work on that and just, I was kind of coming up with some taglines. I know Richard and I, Robert and I, sorry, I'm thinking of Richard from Rock Mount Near. We're thinking of some things, just like taglines, like that reservation, like, you know, didn't you hear Arches is online now? Something for either billboards or posters if we want to, the travel council advisory board, kind of go board with that. Help out Robert as well as maybe at the airport too, thinking what we could do for marketing.
Cool. So adding airport stuff to this list.
Yes.
Great.
Just thought of yesterday.
Love it.
But Kate liked it too from Arches. She's going to, we're going to reach out together and meet with Andy and see what we can get approved for at the airport. But any other ideas what people are thinking about?
Are we planning on putting them on the messaging boards off there on the corners?
Yes.
So the locator boards?
Yes.
Okay. We hadn't written that down, so that's actually great. Locator?
Locator.
With an O?
That one by the Maverick, right? South of town, that one?
There's on.
Not a billboard.
Not a billboard.
These are the kind of like triangular. Public, yeah.
We can even get some prints of, of that as well. We can see how many businesses are willing to display them in their windows up and down the street.
Absolutely.
Isn't Kate getting everyone some, because I've got, I've actually gotten three files from her. Three for ones, because she sent me the file for the rack cards too, so that I could try to use them on my board that I'm making.
I think a good place to start would be maybe just catching everybody up on some of the work that we've been doing with some of our stakeholders. Because I think she'll capture a lot of these questions first and then we can look at what we're missing.
Is it, is it possible to create a QR code? You know, they were talking about doing the QR code that just goes right to the reservation system, you know?
They already have.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, is there a way to create a QR code that is, that would tag back to Discover Moab or the travel council? So that we could identify when we're, when we're looking at what's working, like going, hey, look at, we actually, the QR code, the Discover Moab put up, got this many.
Like tracking.
Track it, you know, the way to track.
Well, Robert, do you want to talk about the Jeep Safari ad? Because I think that kind of captures that at some level.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a hundred percent true. Yeah, because we have a Jeep Safari ad out. We have a QR code out, those are the Jeep Safari. They have those to weigh responsible motorized recreation video up.
Oh, cool.
That's very easy to, it's very easy to make a QR code.
I'm wondering if I can just pull that up for your.
Yeah, that would be interesting to see who gets them up their locator boards or any of our.
They don't have the magazine online.
Yeah, to see kind of track like where people are getting the information from. Local businesses, the locator boards, you know, billboards, magazines, you know, you know, just it'd be a good way to.
That's a great idea because if it, instead of just going to the reservation system, if it goes to Discover Moab, it also lists the C ways.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it can even be just as simple as just like a redirect that's a counter.
Yeah.
But yeah, for certain, anything that we put up, we're going to do that so we can kind of track specifically what's going through us. For the rack cards, probably can't change that based off of what NPS has approved. But if it's anything that's like third party that we're working on.
Do you have an example of that?
Well, I was going to pull it up. Is the Eastern Jeep Safari magazine online? Yeah?
I think they do have one.
They have, yeah, they have printed one.
I have that in my office, but if you'll give me 30 seconds, I'll see if I can find it. Yes, you have to get file approval. It doesn't, it doesn't link to the video because we have not approved it yet. Yes. I think I'm going to beat you.
Well, I don't know, Jason, would print it, I'm just thinking for businesses as far as like, we could send them an email that has it, but, but then they have to print it and they have to hang it and whereas if it were already printed and I took it.
Here we are.
And I took it to them.
Yeah, and I would like, I would get, I would like to see our QR code at businesses versus.
Yeah, the park service QR code.
Oh, for sure. I think that'd be good. So I think when we're like going back and, you know, kind of filtering the data, you know, telling the arches, you know, like, hey, we, you know, this relationship. We're very much a part of this, you know, relationship and get the work out and stuff.
So this is the ad that we placed in the Jeep Safari magazine. It's right below the like Presidents of Red Rock Four Wheelers letter. So it's going to be something a lot of people see. It says, Recreate Responsibly in Moab. And it links you to basically a how to behave on the trail as a motorized recreational user video that we have not. We're going to send it to the commission for review before we make the link live. Right now it just goes to info page.
So I have a question then, because all, right now all overnight rentals are required to post all of this in their place of business. Would that QR code satisfy that? Do you know that would satisfy that requirement?
That, I will mention that on here. So maybe when we get to that, we can dive into that for a second.
Some might be more palatable if it was just like, hey, stick up this QR code instead of, hey, stick up this long list of rules.
So I'm going to propose that I just kind of go through our kind of, our, our current kind of like work plan. And then we kind of nitpick based on that. Does that sound, that sound good? So this is, right now, this is basically a working document. That is the result of conversations between our office, the NPS, the Utah Office of Tourism, the Utah Governor's Office of Public Land, the Public Lands Policy Coordinating Office. And this kind of ongoing stakeholder building, it's been kind of really great for this process. And so this is kind of like not just our office, this is also what other collaborators are doing. So starting with, our, our office is going to, Melissa, maybe you want to speak to this, kind of the plan with Love for the educational campaign? Where we're at for launching an educational advertising campaign with Love, looking at YouTube and all of that. Right, okay, so that's a good point. So basically we've put aside $200,000 for our contribution to Arches timed entry educational kind of advertising material. And the lion's share of that, we wanted to do a targeted digital campaign going to TripAdvisor banners, YouTube, kind of those five second ads before you watch a video. And paid social media to get people who are, you know, targeting, we're really trying to target people who are going, already looking to visit our area, already looking to visit Arches and Moab. And increase awareness about timed entry, kind of in a proactive way rather than a reactive way. And as our contract with Love Communications expired at the end of last year. We had to figure out how do we move forward as quickly as possible on this while navigating the county purchasing policy. So basically for anything under, and they gave us a quote of like, they, they would do, charge 20,000 in professional services to do 200,000 of placement, basically. So helping to design and plan and actually launch that, which is a discounted rate. So in that category, that amount of funds, we need to do three email quotes basically. Melissa went ahead and reached out, I think, five or six agencies. So we have a bunch of competitive plans and costs.
We are still on, this, this DM class, now they are working with the state, so they know the market.
Yeah.
In our opinion, we just last week Robert and others, we decided to steal a lot of education.
Yeah.
The other agencies are really good, but they are not like tourists, folks are tourists, so they don't know, such a weird one.
Yeah.
We decided to go to a lot of education, so now it's the next step.
Yeah, the next step is actually getting a contracting place, going through the, do, going through the purchasing agent and actually making that happen. But there's, we're pretty good on a, on a draft plan. We have a meeting tomorrow internally to kind of, with Love to sort that all out. But at this point, we're pretty much ready to press the button. Chanel, I think you might, I'm going to mute you if that's all right. And then the other kind of part of that to take action is that Robert's going to coordinate with Kate from the NPS and Mark Finley to figure out if we can't cut up the video that they produced into kind of a shorter, snappier 15 and 30 second cut that can be kind of placed specifically online for, for targeted ads. Because a five-minute informational video isn't going to capture people's attention. So Robert's on that. And then we would, before placing anything, run that kind of material to the county and NPS to make sure that everyone's comfortable with what's actually there. Um, any questions on that before we go to the next kind of thing? Okay.
I would just say like, as quick as possible, just because that is the number one feedback we heard from all of the other destinations, like get it out and get it out early.
Okay, well, meeting tomorrow.
Can we help?
I think right now, all we have to do is get a contract that, that covers all of the kind of.
I just need to check tomorrow and be more specific with that.
Right.
And then we just need to get stuff signed.
And we just say all of us, part of us, so what's the next step?
Who signs? Does that have to go to the commission?
So the, I believe the county, the commission chair, so Gabe has to sign off on that contract. And then I, tomorrow after we figure out exactly what we want to do with Love, I would work with Mallory and Chris to get the county's legal ICA, inter, independent contractor agreement fleshed out, agreed by both parties, signed by both parties and then we fly. So. Well, Chris is a purchasing agent, so he has to. Yeah, so the goal is to get that sorted this week and signed by the end of next. I mean, if we could target next week's commission meeting for signing. commission meeting for signing, that'd be ideal. Or we'll sign it ratified, something like that. Yep. So, and then another one I wanted to mention on here is that the State Office of Tourism has hired Love for in-state public relations on kind of a number of issues, recognizing that doing PR outside of the state is obviously important. But for stuff like this, where there's a lot of questions and kind of intrigue about these kinds of things, having a focused in-state PR specialist is going to be important. So that's not our relationship, but that kind of is an asset that we can lean on collectively for, for timed entry. And then, um, this is kind of a a bigger push again, in the short term. But Melissa's going to work with UTIA and the Utah Office of Tourism to put together kind of an email that captures, if you're a business, what do you need? Here's all of the rack card information. If you want to print them out, then you can do that yourself. If you don't, this, you know, we'll be getting some of those rack cards physically and we'll be going out distributing, providing some messaging for kind of like typically asked questions from visitors, especially people who are kind of upset with the system in general. And kind of how do we want to message that collectively as a community and as a state? We think that this has an opportunity to make Arches a visitor visitor experience and try to kind of equip local businesses with those really, you know, short-term answers. So this is, this is kind of the messaging we're recommending. And so Melissa's going to work with the Office of Tourism and UTIA to kind of do, to draft that. And then once ready, we're going to send it out through all of our business licenses in the county. We're going to share that with Chamber to distribute locally to everyone on their list. The State Office of Tourism is going to distribute it to everyone on their list. For everyone else in the state who might get people asking questions about Arches timed entry and that, so is UTIA. So that'll, that'll get, I think, really good reach for kind of best practices for, for visitor, for businesses who are experiencing questions from visitors. And, and then locally, kind of do one-on-one follow-ups. Robert and Melissa are going to, once we have the rack cards physically, and then we have the outdoor adventure guides, you've already printed, kind of go business to business and say, do you have it? Does this make all sense to you? Do you have a plan for implementation? And we'll bring you free rack cards and free outdoor adventure guides. If you want to, if you want to have us come chat with you, make sure everything makes sense. Yeah.
One thing that Rachel and I noticed when we were trying to put together the side of our board, everything, the Park Service has given us, you know, great information on how to get reservations and if you're here and you want day, you know, the next day, whatever. One thing that you did not put on there that we might want to remind people, you only need one reservation per car.
Yeah.
And the reason that's so big to us is we get people coming in all the time that have purchased a online auto, auto tour. And there was one auto tour company that we actually had to call in and say, hey, you guys need to quit. You need to make sure it's a little more clear. People were coming in and they had purchased an auto tour. And it says, how, how many people? And so they were getting charged, like if there was a car for five people, they're going to charge $50.
Right. Like each person's paying for an entry.
It's, it doesn't even get you in the park. That's just the auto tour to listen to.
Oh, I didn't understand what you were talking about.
And we, we actually rented auto, auto tour, an audio tour for $5. And they were buying them online and it was, you had to say how many people, so it charged you like a $10 per person. And these people were going, and it's like, we're so sorry, it's not us, it's not, we have nothing to do with it. But you just pay, you, you only have one radio that comes through your, you know, or through the audio system.
Totally.
So, yeah, people were paying for their whole family instead of just per vehicle. So maybe make sure it says per vehicle. And that's, we made sure we put a line on our board saying it's per vehicle.
Oh, my God. Yeah.
It's crazy.
So, I mean, that makes me think of the FAQs for just the system in general. I mean, we're going to emphasize those, but I, I wonder if there's a way, well, yeah, to just, just make sure everyone knows. It's like, I almost want to like run a small exam for every business center. What happens if it's 5:59, it's the day before and there is a ticket available? Can you or can you not?
We can make it like a game show.
That'd be kind of funny, actually.
You wait one more minute, you can get online and get one.
That would be actually kind of fun. You know, who knows, anybody has the bandwidth to do it.
Yeah, yeah, just a bunch of.
But have, have like, if we partnered with KZMO and made it, like, it could be, you know, they do pub trivia. It could be like kind of a daytime fun at the mark, you know? You win a prize if you get everything right.
I mean, if we did it.
Come on down.
So what if I don't have a reservation section?
Yeah.
I realize that people have Arches on their, that's their top choice.
Yeah.
Currently, when they get turned away, we get, like, here's other places you can go. And so is that part of the, what if I don't have a reservation information?
The Park Service is going to, supposed to be coming up with it. We have, at the MIG, we have papers that say, you know, what you'll do. And we're actually going to redo those to say, we can't get into Arches today with this.
So what, so what, what we're thinking for now is that Robert's already put together the outdoor adventure guides and at least for our office, rather than develop like a specific timed entry suggestion. Because then everyone's going to go to those, whatever, top five places. Like, here is pre-selected, you know, it's everything, it's just everything that's not NPS, right?
All the dinosaur tracks, right?
Yeah.
Give them a wide variety, get us spread them all out.
Right, and we already have them, we want to update them anyway, so we kind of need to use them. So that's one thing that we're going to provide as kind of part of this business package is that. And we'd obviously provide that to the bank or anyone else.
Great.
Yeah, good questions.
We're going to send it from your house. Can't get into Arches, go have lunch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Have lunch with the city councillor instead.
Like an artist?
Exactly.
What about OHV and UTV regulations, like the new noise ordinance? How we're at with that, is her name Christine?
Is she attorney?
No, not, no, not her. With the BLM, just like what we could do, regulations, like if we can do that placard that you're talking about a couple months ago, Jason? How to spread the word for the new regulations.
I thought I saw something, Chrissy was working on the placard.
So we do. We do have that on a list, once we're done with the Arches stuff.
Can we do anything like, as advisors, we're like split up with that one as well as like the, the rules and regulations to achieve that marketing grant for the 5,000? Just kind of create those if it's right now in this meeting or else like afterwards, me reaching out, whoever wants to work on those two individually and we can help with those the next month as a board?
Absolutely. And, and I'll mention that on the next, once we're done with Arches timed entry. If we want to cover that, does that feel good?
Yeah.
No, there's more.
Oh, I thought you were doing Arches.
That was just the first two things.
Oh, okay.
So the rack cards, they, the NPS has ordered 150,000. They are going to send us some number of pallets of those for our office.
Some number of pallets?
Yes, yes. And the State Office of Tourism has translated those into four languages, I believe, French, German, Mandarin and Spanish, right? But they, but that hasn't been updated on the rack cards and they haven't worked it yet. But that's in their pipeline to do. Again, the outdoor adventure guides. And then some more in-market physical messaging. For, we've talked about using those kind of traffic signs, flashing signs. I know that the county used that for the mask ordinance. Do you familiar, who, who did that? Was that UDOT or was that a county?
Yeah. As I recall, there are city signs.
Like City Public Works or something?
They were located in the UDOT right of way and so you got, we had to negotiate with you about what messaging was appropriate.
Cool. So right now, we've proposed signs north and south of town on 191, east and west of 70 of the Moab Axon 70. That's a Arches timed entry required these dates, here's the link. And Bianca, the Office of Tourism, is going to try to work with her contacts at UDOT to get that started. So that's starting to happen, Bianca does stuff really fast, so it'll probably be done by the end of the week. That's an exaggeration, I have no idea. I like this idea of airport-based messaging that we haven't really talked about or scoped out yet. Do you need any help with that? Or do you feel like you can kind of take that? Okay, cool. I'm just going to, I'm trying to.
Rocky Mountain Air, is there a sign where they, where they unload?
Hell, that's going to mention that.
We could put a sign up, you know, where they disembark from the train and get onto their buses.
So they, in the buses. They are working with Mac, so.
Not the MIG.
The Mac.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, can you reach it a little more?
Um, well, you know, so we're doing tours for Rocky Mountain Air in the park and stuff. So people will be getting off the train if they signed up for a tour, they'll be, will be doing guided tours with them. So we'll be doing, running a couple buses every day, you know, through there. But they're also dropping people off at the Moab Adventure Center to pick up rental cars as well as enterprise. So I think having something that's on the counter of enterprise, you know, at these places to let people know that, hey, if you're ready to park and plan to go to Arches, you can get a timed entry, you know, thing. So, so I think that having, having some sort of placard that's even, the same placard that's in hotels, you know, could be on the counters of these car businesses as well.
Is that something?
I think for hotels, sorry, I think for hotels too, the rack cards will be super helpful. And then I know all of our properties, what we're doing is in any arrival, we do, they're called pre-arrival emails that get sent out with our confirmation number and whatnot. We're actually adding it to that, that information so that people are aware of the timed entry and for any reservations past that March third date, just so that everyone's aware as far as all of the guests that our hotels represent. And I would assume that a lot of hotels will be following suit as far as that goes, because that's information you can put in the pre-arrival email.
Yeah, we're also doing a whole webpage, you know, one of our pages, if you thought it, you know, we'll have a whole thing on it for Moab Adventure Center, which we're like, Discover Moab, it's like, I think it's us, right? You know, most of the time, so we're really doing a big push, you know, to make that an information page as well.
Great. So I mean, I would hope that sending an email with those digital assets of the links, the QR codes, the, the kind of NPS pre-approved messaging, that that will be enough to, for businesses to kind of fit whatever their needs are. And then the idea of having those follow-ups will be able to, you know, I think most, the most proactive and on-the-ball businesses probably already have a plan, but I'm sure there's going to be laggards and people that we're going to have to be kind of proactively work with. So I think that'll be a partnership between likely the Chamber and ourselves to get the legwork to make that happen. On.
We've got planes, trains.
Yeah, and automobiles. This is.
Impressive rollout.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And then the last thing is like, we were thinking maybe not so many billboards, but one that came to mind when I was driving down from Salt Lake, because there's a handful of billboards in Wellington, right after you leave the gas station. Every single person driving down from Salt Lake is going to drive past it. It seems to be kind of underutilized, honestly. So I would imagine that that would not be a bad place to kind of consider doing one, at least. And then, you know, the 70 and 191 focused on the UDOT flashing signs, but.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind though, if we imply the reservations are required, the billboards will be invalid. So we'll need to change them. A typical billboard, about $3,000 to vinyl printed and installed on top of the rental piece.
Yeah.
Could like April through September on?
Yeah, you could, but you know, you start to run into that, really should keep it to 10 words.
Yeah.
To be able to read it in three seconds.
Yeah. So this is, this is for Robert's billboard brain to think about, is how, what I would say. And then if Robert doesn't think this is a good idea, it's not going to happen.
But what about doing a digital billboard? Because I've seen Moab on digital billboards in Salt Lake.
Yeah, we've done those for years. Those have, that's not bad.
They have lower timeframes.
There we go.
What about the little advertising things on the gas pumps at Wellington? Because everything stops at that gas station.
That's a good point.
Or even on the Maverick. You guys ever looked at how to get on those Mavericks videos? Everywhere in that same video plays everywhere, I mean, there's like ads.
I remember that Elaine tried to do that last year, but it cost a lot.
What do they call that, out of phone? So I think doing this specifically targeting, which is focusing on online and getting, being more, you know, surgical with who we're reaching.
Skywriting?
There we go, yes. Let's do that. Okay, the last thing for this is to try to do some research about, like, there's, everything we talked about is communications oriented. And the last thing is, we've, we've set aside $50,000 for kind of research and evaluation. I don't know if you all remember, but last summer, Wayne Freeman came and he spoke about kind of a general visitor dispersion research project, which kind of got tabled and then Elaine left and then I started and then it kind of disappeared. So thinking of, of Wayne being who's a total expert in this, to kind of lead a research project to build off of the, the research that NPS is already going to do within their park boundaries to help get a better understanding of what's going to happen to the surrounding public lands, Corona Arch, Grand Staff, Dead Horse. And kind of be a coordinator of all of that, try to take advantage of cell phone data that I believe we've already kind of supported for him to use slash someone that we pay for. And then do that on the ground, surveying and kind of, and a bonus addition would be wrapping in a simple economic kind of analysis. What happens to the general economy, not, you know, not the kind of forecasting that led to the initial uproar about this? Just saying, simply after the fact, it, the economy grew by 5% and timed actually happened. And that was the same thing that happened last year. So, you know, that kind of stuff, I think would be really good if we're doing evaluation of timed entry.
Wasn't there something like Wayne Freeman was, or someone else was doing the same thing that he was? And so we were like, thought it was a double.
Well, we had those numbers. I think it was the, it was the, the Park Service. That, yeah.
Yeah, there is a.
Because he, when he was first presenting, he was talking about going and doing it in the parks too. And it's like, we don't need it in the parks.
Yeah.
It was, that would be double.
Yeah. So in this case, what, what I'm proposing to start would be to reach out to Wayne, set up a coordination meeting with our office, Wayne, Amy Tendrick from the park, who'd be doing the research for NPS and this woman Denise, who's the research manager for the State Office of Tourism. And just get that started, get that ball rolling, see what's feasible with the amount of money that we set aside. If we need additional support, who else can get involved? Because I just think that's going to be super important to, after this pilot happens, have a clear understanding of, oh, this was great, this was, this actually improved visitor experiences and we made more money, or it made visitor experiences actually suck more and the economy tanked. You know what I mean? And having a clear and object.
It seemed like Wayne, like, wasn't the 50 that we had to come up with? He was doing a conjunction with Utah State and they were coming up with some of the money too. So I think it's good to get the conversation going to see.
I don't know if 50 grand is going to be the final amount, maybe stuff has to move around. But I think that it's a super huge priority for us to like get going.
Sure.
I think we have enough time, it gives us about two months before it starts to. I guess the last thing was whether that's they're doing it or our office is doing it, having some sort of kind of community-wide survey that, that if you come to visit the Moab area, some kind of gauge of general satisfaction as a result of timed entries that we can, or people are saying. And then hopefully that goes into this and feeds that throughout the system. Because maybe the first month's like, oh, my God, I hate it so much. And then by the end, it's like, oh, we used to.
Well, yeah, it'd be good because like rec.gov has those email addresses, you know, if there's a way that we could get those email addresses from rec.gov to send them a survey after the trip date so that we can find out. What's that?
Free survey?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to find out how our satisfaction is afterwards, but do we have a baseline of what was it like? Do we have that?
We don't, the parks does. They, so they, last year, I think May and June, they created a baseline survey. And they're going to ask the exact same questions, the exact, do the same socioeconomic indicators for this year. For this year, so they actually they have a really great scientific method for this in the parks.
Because it seems like we're doing a lot for the park, you know, and obviously it's something that benefited us, but, you know, I think having like. That those email addresses, park could really go to bat for us to get those right.
Yeah, or if they just collect it.
Yeah, just give us, yeah, exactly. We give them the survey, give rec.gov the survey, that rec.gov send it out, and then we, yeah.
I don't think they'll give us the emails, but but they could potentially work with us to do some kind of customer satisfaction.
Those surveys that you had yesterday.
Yes.
Awesome. That's the first time I've ever done any of those.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I've never seen, I didn't even know what that was called.
Mentimeter.
Yes. Is there a way we could, I mean, how easy or how hard would it be to to like set one of those up? Can you keep them open long term?
Sure.
Um, and then have have like either a QR code that goes to it, like sitting at the mix saying, how what, how was your experience?
Right.
Or, you know, and or and maybe even other places and just see if people go on and and. And answer us, you know, just a couple little short.
Yeah.
Question, did like, did you have a reservation before you came?
Yeah.
How, you know, and then how was your experience or, you know, rated from one to whatever and.
Yeah. I think something.
Did you spend more time downtown or how, you know, did you or did you visit the downtown stores or anything like that? Just. Get some of those just minor questions answered.
Or maybe even having to include, if you didn't get into the park, what did you do?
What did you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Daniel?
I was just gonna say, you don't need to spend a lot of money on that. My hotel guests will tell me and I can let you know what they say.
Right. Right. Totally, yeah, but some way to capture that over time, so we kind of.
Well, I mean, I even, my first thought was, well, I could just come up with a short little handwritten one and then. You know, I put it in my, you know, put it on the checklist or whatever, but then it's like, that's more work for me.
I I think the simplest thing.
If we do it online, it'd be easier.
I'm sure we could do a simple Qualtric survey that's, you know, that is like the same, the same questions the whole time, one link. And anybody can distribute it anywhere. And then we just. Scan this and then do your thing, you do on your phone in two minutes.
I I really, I was really, I really liked that.
QR codes are back.
I got one question. A little bit. But when they go to rec.gov, they have to create an account if they don't have one, is that correct?
Correct.
So we may need, I mean, hopefully that's not too intimidating to to most of them, but I'm just thinking there are some. That might need just like a, hey, heads up, you you need an account to do this, or you need to get an account, but it's easy.
I think once you go to rec.gov, if you go to do it, they it says you have to do it.
You have to have this.
Sign up. I think it says you have to sign up for it.
Yeah.
It's just time, it's time consuming, but not that bad.
Yeah.
It's just a couple extra steps you go.
Cool. Um, well, there are non-Arches time adventure related things we can talk about if you're ready to fly into that corner of the universe. Daniels, your hand still raised? Did we miss something or is that leftover from? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, leftover.
No worries. Okay. So I think this is what you were talking about. So at this point, I didn't I didn't know Christina was working on this.
I just sent an email the other day that that said that she was working on it, because when I was talking, I've been kind of going back and forth with. Like the 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 new Title V.
Yeah, yeah.
You know. Which. Which I don't know, there's some, there's some things in Title V, we can get into it later, but I think that the the travel council should be involved with. But anyway, but with this. Yeah, Christina just said something that she was doing, putting something together for it, so maybe we should touch base with her and see.
Yeah.
You know, um, also. With this and the commission also, the city needs to kind of follow is that there is. There's a bill on the hill for OHV education. Have you guys seen that bill? Which is getting, it's a. It's a bill that says. That if you rent, own, rent or own an OHV, you have to take this class.
Oh, wow.
It's an online education class that talks about obeying the law, you know, staying on the trail. You know, a lot of, there's a lot of really good things in this bill, and if you don't, you're held liable for it, like you can be.
Must have been a number.
Fifty.
Oh, it's not one eighty.
It may be this one eighty, yeah.
Yeah.
House bill or Senate bill? You could say, I think it's a house.
But it's a, and I I asked Christina about it, and she was like, oh, yeah, I forgot to bring it up to the commission the other night, you know, stuff. But part of this bill is it goes over this stuff and it's so if you're. If you're renting an OHV from a company, you have to, you have to be certified, so you have to take this class, you have to get the certification.
Oh, even if you rent, not even.
Even if you're renting. And if you're owner, you have to take this class as well. And then what happens too is for the city and the county, which I thought was pretty interesting, is is that. You are registered a license plate, like a big, like a big numbered license plate, so it's getting rid of the tiny decals that go on the side. The state will be issuing big license plates so that if you see this person doing something wrong.
Yeah.
You got big numbers, you're not trying to get that little tiny decal. And so. It's actually, it's looking pretty good that. And even UTV, OHV, HEB groups are all signing onto this bill and they're saying that.
Oh, they are? Well, there was a few things in the first drop that they were like, no way.
No.
But then it burned.
Because a lot of people come to town, purchase their OHV permit from us. How would we be able to issue them this great big?
No, you wouldn't be issuing it, it's issued by the.
So they have to do it before they ever come here.
Issued by the state, but well, no, so this is Utah registered vehicles.
Just Utah registered. So not visiting, not visiting people.
All OHV vehicles.
So only Utah State.
So it would be replacing that little decal.
And how would, would there be reciprocity with other states even?
There is no reciprocity with these states anywhere.
No, but what the.
There is for on speed.
It's only if they're street legal license plated, and then actually there are some states we are not reciprocal with, and if you ask the. Comp the state, which states those are and give us a list, they say, oh, we don't have a list yet, we're we're not sure.
I know, I asked this years ago.
Yeah, they don't know.
I guess, I guess I don't know what how how it works with out-of-state vehicles, you know, like if if they come and they have to take this class and stuff. But I'm just saying, you know, for for rental companies, you know, things that we're dealing with a lot here, you know. It it could be a very good, it could be a beneficial thing, you know, that, you know, they're saying that if you get caught, you know, going off trail. You could be fined or and have to do community service hours to to do all this stuff.
So do you know, and because there was a couple of concerns about that in the if they, you know, this number was reported and they were renting or even just lending out, say, to a friend. It was the owner of the vehicle who was cited.
That's what I am thinking.
Whoever.
Yeah.
So. And that was one major, major concern of of the rental companies in town, but I don't know if that got addressed or not, I haven't.
You know, I don't know if it did get addressed either, so, but with that being said, the rental companies would all have to take this class, all the machines would have that bigger license plate on it. Which may.
Actually, wow.
You know.
The rental companies are strictly the license plate, it's not really a license plate, it's a.
Yeah.
It's a registration number.
So anyway, so I'm wondering is if this if this bill passes, it could change what we've, what needs to be drawn up as far as. As this placard that goes on on doors and what we're telling people. So we'll want, we'll want those things, we'll want those two things to talk, you know, and to to correlate with each other.
Well, I mean, unless it's less than a month of being done.
Yeah, we're so happy.
You can check.
So.
I think it's what, twenty-three days or something?
So anyway, um, and I I was gonna, it's on my list to talk to Christina more about it, you know, and see.
It's just, I mean, I s- I see a. A lot of pros for it. My issue is we have so many from out of state coming. So how would, I mean, you.
Well, they're not getting it anyway. You know, they're coming from out of state.
Right.
You know, so I think, you know, I think it's worth going after the low-hanging fruit of, you know, someone who's renting an OHV in Moab. We've at least know that they're watching, they're having to watch this video before they take this razor out, you know.
And we're rentals, which I think.
You're renting in town. Which I think is is a good thing, and then anybody from Wausau's front who's coming or anywhere else in Utah has to watch that video. And with a, and I think that it's. Picking on like your registration, like when you go to register your your UTV or whatever, you have to show them a certificate that you watched this video before you registered. So. So there's some things on here that I think, I think we should hold off on this.
Okay.
Until we see what what happens with with that bill.
So do you, are you gonna like reach out to Christina and mention that?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I've been in contact with her.
I'll just make make you the lead then.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Good to move on?
Yep.
Okay, so there's a couple of things with the UOT Cooperative Grant Program. A couple of artist internal staff things that we need to work on, which are completing some paperwork for the past grants that are outstanding. That would give us. Some grant money that we're owed that just. Wasn't completed when we got it, when I got into the office that we need to work on. But but then for the future, for the for the Northern Utah Fly-in Grants that we applied for, received, commission-approved the match dollars for. I think that's a bigger question of figuring out. What exactly that looks like, I mean, I, there isn't an application in place already. And I think we're expected to. Anyway, I don't, I I don't exactly know what the next step is, but obviously Arches time that treats priority number one, but we do have basically a three hundred thousand dollar total. Marketing campaign on on the books for this year that the state is providing us with fifty percent of the money for. The intention originally is, you know, targeting people who are flying in who aren't driving a an RV camping on public land and therefore spending more money in our community. I think, you know, like the train, people flying in are gonna be higher dollar per impact. People. The, when this was brought up, I put it on the pre-authorization list just because why not? Got flagged as something that the commission kind of wants to go over and figure out really what are the goals of this and how do we design it? And obviously making sure that whatever marketing that goes with that would be approved, but at this point. This would be another kind of love communications contract rather than this larger RFP would be help us execute it, it'll cost us this much money. But I don't, I don't know, right now, it doesn't seem like a huge priority given timed entry and everything we got going on, but at the same time, if we don't move on this. Now is the time to do this kind of stuff.
It seems like you should move on, move on for right now with the kind of a September, August, September, October.
Yeah.
You know.
Almost like shoulders.
Visit visitation time or or maybe whatever. Because the airline quits flying, what, December fifteen?
End of November.
End of November, so so was it worth looking at? Promoting this for September, October, so busy, you know, it's so hard that, you know, it's like.
Delta stops. December, January, February, March.
But if, but if you did it, if you.
Yeah, so it's gone for four months.
We we have to spend the promotion this year, so we could do promotion like September, October, November promoting Moab in. In March and April, you know, or whatever.
For the following year.
For the following year, depending on.
Yeah.
If we have that flight contract, you know.
One, one thing I wanted to ask. Perhaps the state on this, it's like, is there flexibility, like our our situation has changed in some ways. Like if we if we shifted the direction of this to support timed entry or other kinds of things that are, you know, visitation oriented, because they're they're kind of changing their perspective. Similar to locally that just inducing in visitation isn't necessarily a good thing. Moving towards more quality visitation and and towards, you know, the forever mighty side of things, so I would wonder if. If the commission and our body finds like a slightly different angle on spending this money, if they'd be comfortable with us shifting that. I don't even know if that's a possibility, I don't know if we want to do that, but.
I would, I don't think we should shift it towards timed entry, that's that's a, we beat that horse to death at this point, you know, and I think that.
I think even like next time fly, flying today, like.
Pushing it to other activities, you know, would be would be good.
Well, and love can usually get things up pretty quick, if we got our contract and they wanted to start marketing in April and May for and bolster our summer season a little bit. Because we definitely do drop.
That's a good point.
In the summer. So.
Yeah.
That's a part of Moab in the summer to enjoy the light sky.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I owe.
Do a, you know, somehow promote it that, you know, stay, you know, do, you know, your. Your visitation time would be in the evening, maybe relaxing during the day, you know, or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, and we can work with love and the data ecosystem that we're, again, gonna renew that contract to look at areas of low bookings. And times of low booking to specifically try to use this as a visitation spreading mechanism. Similar to timed entry where it's like we could be very targeted, who we're approaching and when. You know, I I would, I would, I think that if we can make it as targeted as possible and look, you know, these weekends are down or this is low or whatever. Dynamically pushing stuff at given times to try to spread that visitation out, so we're not having huge spikes, or at least being responsible for. Put, yeah, exactly.
And is it typically you just, because I I'm not sure, with love, do you just give them the money and say, this is what we want to do, like you.
No, we work.
You guys, or do you guys have to?
They propose kind of an initial plan.
These things for like campaign for the arches, I say we have two hundred, two hundred K.
Yeah.
So what was your proposal we do? Okay, I mean, I don't want to spend a two hundred K just digital, but give me something.
Yeah.
Ideas, I can compare with the other agency, so basically it's what they did and what they did.
Right, so would you put an RFP out or would you just love again? Like for this art, for this fly-in?
That would be another campaign to.
It'd be a separate contract.
Yes, so now we want to do just hired, love communication by a pay, not for the full year, because we are paying for losses, so we are not doing nothing in those seasons, so. We are just spending the money for nothing.
So maybe what we need, if we need to do it by campaign and by contract, we need to also talk to them about.
Yeah.
Apply in for summer.
Because what we what we could do is say, here's who we originally applied for, here's the content of the original application that was approved. And if we if we were to go forward this, what would you suggest on as a first blush for how it would execute? And then maybe bringing that initial proposal to the commission. And having that as the first conversation, I know, I know that this will probably have to be reviewed at some point.
Do we need the the. Grant from Northern Utah, like, do we need the qualifications first?
What do you mean?
Like what it has to say or what it has to mention, like with line of business?
Oh, like from from the county's perspective?
The county's, or did you say like the airlines changing what they want?
That's a good point, yeah, so well, because we also have separately an opportunity, because I've we've been talking with Andy. Because we're a essential air service grantee, they offer twenty thousand dollars of grant money to support. The airport, marketing for the airport. And we were talking to their staff at Sky West, Robert has been working on a great proposal to do. And have a billboard outside of the Grand Junction Airport, like on your way from Grand Junction to Moab saying like, next time, why don't you just fly to Canyonland instead of flying to Grand Junction?
Because Sky West took away some, a lot of the flights in Grand Junction, so we're hoping to grab more of those people in Moab.
Right. And. So anyway, during that process, they reached out to us and said, can we put a pause on this because we're getting so crushed by the Omicron wave, we're not staffing any. We have, we're having really problems staffing, we don't want you to like advertise at the moment, because we can't handle additional volume. So I don't know if that end, I think I kind of imagine that's not going to be an issue, you know, in the for the rest of the year, but that's why I mentioned it. Because they asked us to kind of put a pause on that. Robert, did I miss anything on that kind of project?
No, it's pretty good, you know, I got an excellent deal on the. The work that I've dealt with for fifteen years. Yeah, they will actually print vinyl and install it for free. Yeah, so literally this has to pay, which is which is fairly inexpensive, about a four hundred dollar.
Yeah. Easy. Yeah, so and then and then that gets, I mean, then the whole grant would pay for that completely, and but that would be a kind of a separate exercise with Sky West, that's not really to try to get people to come here, it's more use the Canyonlands. But that would be a kind of a separate exercise with Sky West. That's not really to try to get people to come here. It's more use the Canyonlands airport specifically as a point of entry to Moab. So that makes Andy happy and that makes Jenny happy.
So.
It kind of gets more in the red shell though.
There you go. Um. A couple of things I want to mention. Basically, the way that that divides out the ad spend that's been budgeted, we budgeted 440,000 total for this year. 200 to timed entry, 150 to fly in, at least 90,000 for kind of various responsible recreation messaging. So stuff like that Jeep Safari ad is where that's kind of coming from. We haven't really made a plan for that, but we've talked, I've talked to most a lot about doing kind of shorter kind of TikTok and real style Instagram kind of things or just working with our local Instagram influencers. We happen to have a lot of them that live here.
We are, we have been in the office now. So it would be a huge field, kind of working with the kids and schools, doing something, some funny videos. Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a lot of cool opportunities there.
They discovered me.
So that's not really scoped out yet, but that's there and that'll probably be, I would imagine I'm going to underestimate, we're probably gonna, I would, I would hope to spend, not hope. I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume we're gonna spend less than that because I'm gonna assume I'm gonna have to work with the budget somewhere and that, I don't know exactly if that 90 K is guaranteed. Um. And then for the, there's been kind of an ask from the commission, kind of specifically really Kevin Walker's leading this to have a review of how the ad policy is working out. So right now, obviously there's the responsible recreation ordinance. And the language is kind of what guides us, but there's no mandatory review process. And so I think what there has been suggested is a conversation about kind of what's needed, what should be changed, which could be changed. I think a happy medium is a process that we could implement where it's a non-mandatory review. So we're proactively weekly, bi-weekly sending out every piece of, of placement ahead of time if we can, after the fact, if we, if we can't due to deadlines, so that everyone on the commission is seeing every piece of, of material that's being produced. Cause right now we don't really have a good kind of system of doing that. And there's been times where stuff pops up and the commission is kind of taken by surprise. And so that's my goal for that. I think there is some appetite also for more of a mandatory review where we can't post anything until we get affirmative kind of approval. But I don't know, I, I don't know if that's the average of the commission wants that, but there's some level of potential change there.
So.
That would be a workshop that would need to be scheduled at some point in the year.
Definitely when you have those conversations, just be mindful that like marketing is very time-based. And so the more red tip, like if you have to get, move on every single little.
It gets so cumbersome.
Yeah.
And I think we just had a real good policy on what is wanted and expected.
And, and we'd be more than happy even without a policy change to institute an internal process of regular reporting of what's going out. I mean, we, we, we keep track of everything. We would just need to make that a part of our weekly routine to just send that out. How we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, and we can say a lot of, we, do a timely response. Sometimes there's great deals.
Yeah.
If we can get some.
Yeah.
To do or whatever.
Yeah. When you would need to get to the end of the year and have all this money that you couldn't spend because you have to wait. I mean, you just need to be able to.
Tuesdays, Mondays.
Yeah.
Well, and I could see too, like having like two people on the commission who you say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna send it to.
Right.
Mary and Jock, you know, and stuff, and then they sign off on it, but trying to get seven signatures, check marks, you know, when you're trying to get something done.
I mean, just pick the people with the like, the least appetite for whatever controversial content. And it's like, if it's passing, it's gonna pass you, it's gonna pass everyone else. Yeah. So Sarah and Kevin, like give, make big, then the review committee or something. I don't know.
They would be the most. They, they would look at it closer.
Right. And then, and then therefore most things go through and if something gets flagged, there could be conversation. I think that's.
Three, two against one?
Yeah.
Or it's one against one.
By conquer.
Cat, two, three.
So, so Mary, do you have any recommendations for, for getting that to happen? Like, should we put, put a workshop together to talk about that process wise? Should I just like work with, I, I know.
Come up with some ideas, what you want.
Yeah.
What you, what you think is a good idea.
Okay.
So is the suggestion coming from your office or from?
Kevin has brought up the idea of a review of the current policy.
Why don't you talk to Kevin?
Okay. I've had a conversation with him.
Idea of what he wants to see.
Yeah.
I, I think we can go to a workshop.
Agreed. Okay, I'll touch base.
People don't come to it. They say they don't have the workshops prepared. Many to what you want to accomplish.
Okay, that sounds good.
And it seems like just increasing the reporting a little bit because even though I've been sitting in these meetings, like I still don't like, I really understand the approval flow. And I haven't really seen, I don't really see the ads unless I have to just.
Yeah. Yeah, I wonder if there's a way that we can make it more public facing or something where it's easy for, at the very least.
It's like, just with all our current ads, videos that, you know, they can access whenever they like.
Like right now is public information on the Grand County Utah dot com website. You can see all the work that we do. At the beer board, we have all the numbers of, all the resources. So we have that information.
Yeah.
For the public and also for the.
I think especially the test here, you know, we've got a great license. They see the volume of work that we've produced.
Yeah.
The way it is very sort of resolution. I think it's something.
Yeah. So I guess I'll probably try to develop some kind of reporting structure that's really easy and straightforward. And propose that and at least start with that. And if that not meeting the muster.
So on the other thing that that's really good for is the public who seems to have kind of this distorted view about what the travel council puts out and then what is just out there. I mean, anyone can use it, you know, an image of arches and advertise whatever you want.
Okay.
Right?
Well.
And so, so it's just one of those, it's not necessarily us putting it out and advertising.
This is one of the things we tried to do with the.
Yeah. Right.
Website, but you know, just don't get a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, I expect more informative on that county Utah website. And the commission has asked the information last year that we want to know what the travel council is doing. That's what we create that is, like, that's what we have all the videos that they have posted like years. They can see everything. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we get complaints about certain videos that they put that not recently, but over the years and it turns out they're not our video.
Right. That's so funny.
Yeah.
So obvious.
Okay, I want to fly through this so we, we get out of here at five. Um, the other last couple of things is just touching base on the billboards. We already have contracts with Robert's leading on this. And besides just ensuring that we're kind of, our contracts are updated and everything is looking at kind of if we want to change what's on there. So I don't, I don't know if you have anything that you want to share on that.
Well, cause I know we talked about the noise ordinance and all of that messages, you know, it's obviously something to put out there. The only issue is it's that ten or three second rule that you really shouldn't adhere to. So, yeah. We want to talk about the doors, the noise ordinance, we can't give detail.
Right.
It just has to be short and sweet.
Before.
So that's why we got to stay on the trail right now, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
That kind of message.
So may, maybe just working on a simple updated campaign for the billboards in town.
A very short URL and it talks about the noise ordinance. It's easy to remember. Boy, I know, something like that.
Are they coming up? Are they like up for renewal or change or?
We're not sure about the renewal dates.
I know the one.
The most expensive of the town.
Sort of. Hurry.
Yeah, well, the one, the poison spider one of the garden town, that's about $500. You know, the one at 400 East is about $800.
Yeah.
Pretty pricey. You know, when we first put up the one on 400 East, it was extremely visible for them, that the U T B rental place put up sign and that lots of good portion of that one. I'm on the fence with that billboard.
And I tried to tell with you and I'd say, yeah, I would do something with, you never think that.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, if you want to make a recommendation of next steps for the current billboards that we have, that would be a good place to start. Just say, we should keep these ones, we should get rid of these ones.
I think we should change, at least change the pictures on them.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kevin. Desensitize the picture.
It just has to be visible. That's the only problem with that one.
Yeah.
In the house upside down.
All right. Okay, I'm just gonna fly through the rest of this. The, the data services contract to maintain the dashboard that they've already developed. We've approved some amount of money, 30K through the pre-authorization list. They sent us a proposal that we have to kind of bet and look at some alternatives and figure out we're paying for the right amount for, for what they're. Um. Special event permitting, I'm doing interviews this week or last week, excuse me, for the primary losing position, the administrative assistant. So I have some good candidates and I'm following up on references this week, hopefully hiring that as soon as possible. That position that's been absent since November, yeah. Handle special event permitting right now, me and Mallory are kind of like neither of our jobs, we're kind of handling that for now. Um. For the short-term rental compliance software. So that's basically tracks all of the overnight accommodations that advertise via VRBO, Airbnb, all that kind of stuff. It scrapes the websites, looks at listings and the intention for us as a county is to compare TRT receipts to basically what did you advertise your rates and how many nights were you booked based on what the website said? At some level, I think this kind of does, if we can solve this, that addresses some of the title five concerns.
It's your fault.
Um, so which I did bring up during that internal conversation before that got listed was like, we, I think we, we could be able to do this without having businesses like actually report this themselves. And that the, you know, our, our licensing and permitting process could pay for the software to do it. Um. And again, you know, the admin assistant would be the person that's monitoring those TRT receipts, looking at the, the software. Currently, I think we're going to change to more expensive but better software. But we, we're going to coordinate with the clerk's office, planning his attorney to like actually meet with those vendors, see the products that they have. I have my choice obviously, but I can't just make that decision. Um. So that's those two things. And then, um. I'm just gonna make sure there's nothing else on the admin person. We have money in, in the budget for a brochure reprint by the end of the year. So that's kind of in the back of Robert's mind to keep an eye on inventory. And when we're trying to get low, if we feel like we need to do reprint this year, that'll be kind of a second half of the year priority for Robert. Um, the leads program is still operating as usual. I, I'd love for us to get that awareness out a little bit more. Does everybody know what I'm speaking about when I say that? You do? Now you do.
I know.
So if you go to our website and you request it for a visitor guide, you can select, share my information with local businesses. So we get how many leads per week or month or?
Well, from, from the website. It can be 300, but they specify their interests.
Yeah. A good point.
So, you know, for a specific, you know, for a lot of things, they can get them for.
Yeah.
Something more specialized like balloon rides or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, it could just be a handful, but they're very focused. We sell the basics of the sensei.
Yeah.
You know, you can get just email them. So it's fantastic market.
Yeah. So incredibly cheap resource for local businesses to take advantage of that I don't think most people know about. Have you got? Has everyone met Vega? Great.
Hello, everyone. Hello. Sorry, you need me for anything?
No.
Cut back the whisk out.
Yeah, good. Thanks. Um. So anyway, I don't, I don't know exactly. Maybe that's a chamber conversation or something like that, but I've been meaning to plug it every time I speak publicly and every time I forget. Why? Because you're using it?
Yeah.
And then if everyone's getting the same email, it's not as useful. Maybe we need to increase the price. Trade shows Melissa is totally crushing that this year. So she's going to Reno next week for Go West. No. Yes, for Go West and kind of leading all of our kind of travel work that Elaine used to do. I'll probably go to like one or two big important things, but Melissa's mostly taking that on. I mean, we have budget to support that. Um, and these are the questions that really I think we could use some kind of chewing on and feedback with the last 10 minutes of our day. Um, so we, the, the, the event grant program that we've done for a long time. A, how are we going to do it this year? Getting that up and running, you know, internally, you know, Mary Lou and Elaine basically ran that. Obviously Robert knows how it works historically, but building, we don't have like the institutional knowledge to like run that as is. So kind of short-term, we have that money allocated. I think like the Folk Fest and Summer Concert Series are anticipating that funding to run. And I think continuing to support that is a good thing, but in the longer term, as we do kind of strategic planning, figuring out what is the role of a program like that? And if ultimately it's just to provide, you know, local community events like the Summer Concert Series. Let's just be clear about that and make it that that's what it is. It's to support local community events, which helps people's morale during the busy tours. You know, something like that. Um, any, any kind of quick thoughts?
Well, yeah, kind of going back historically, Robert, tell me if I'm wrong, you know, so is we did these grants to, it's like seed money, you know, to get it going. And I think we used to have like a, like a five-year, you can only get it for five years. Is that what it was or, or something? And then after five years, you weren't eligible for that grant anymore. Cause it was to get you off the ground, get your feet underneath you, become financially efficient.
On the next Jeep spark.
So that we could then move on to other programs. What happened and what's kind of happened is like, which I think is fine is like the Folk Fest and the music festival, they, they kept tweaking, tweaking the program so that they could qualify for it. You know, they're like, well, we're, we're offering this band camp, you know, for four, you know, and which I think is good. And I, and I think it keeps these events fresh, you know, it keeps them adding new things or tweaking things a little bit.
Oh, because they apply for a new component.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Interesting.
So that they could qualify for it again.
Right.
And so I think that like a lot of that is good, you know, and I, and I, and I like the fact that it's that it's seed money, you know, to get them off the ground, you know, I kind of, you know, I look at like the, the Folk or the, the music festival and stuff like that. Hopefully we can quit funding that event by providing the stage, you know, it's like, hey, our contribution to this is this stage, you know? And, and then that way we can take that money that would have normally gone to them at 26,000 or whatever and use, give it to another event, you know? So I, I would kind of like to see new events coming in that we're kind of focusing on.
Yeah. I know. My understanding is that, is that kind of five-year, that seed thing I didn't know about, but that it used to be a year-long thing. Let's fill up the calendar with different stuff. And that now we have the busy season that's kind of full and then it became a shoulder season extension program, basically. And now those shoulder season programs are doing very successful. So to me, I think this is more of a conversation of, you know, do we keep expanding that? Do we, do, do we need to play a role with this program to continue to expand that shoulder season? As a part of kind of larger planning conversations. And then at, I, you know, at the, at what point do we, because we could continue to grow and grow and grow. At what point do people say, well, we actually don't want.
We've grown too much.
Yeah, something like that. So just like what, what really are the intended impacts of this program?
And maybe it needs to be broken down into like local event grants, you know, like, cause I think like part of TRT should be to benefit the locals. You know, it, it should be, there should be a piece of this pie that goes to the Summer Concert Series. You know, it's just, it's a line item.
That's, yeah.
And but then you have like the Folk Festival that's bringing people in. How do we get them on their feet where they, they don't have to ask for money?
Right.
You know, and, and then maybe we look at it to go, okay, we have these events that are shoulder season, but maybe, how do we get, maybe we get the Folk Festival to be seven days instead of three days, you know, so the people are coming, staying longer. So we're, we're. So we're, we're getting that person who's coming to, we're not getting twenty people to come to Moab for two days, we're getting ten people to come to Moab for four days.
Yeah.
You know, and, and strive to find these events that have, that are bringing people for longer periods of time.
Right. I, I totally agree. So in terms of memorializing that, thinking through that, having kind of strategy for that for kind of next year, um, I would imagine that kind of is a part of a planning exercise. I don't, I, I, because I think right now for this year, it's kind of as, as, as the way I'm thinking about it. And then maybe when it comes to talking about the budget recommendation, which I'm being asked to prepare for September, because, which is, I guess, typically when we're supposed to do it, but every year it's pushed back, and it becomes chaos in November. So Chris is asking for an earlier request, but is that the time to kind of revisit this and say, okay, for twenty twenty-three, how are we gonna be designed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, in the meantime, I think the way that we should probably do this to review any additional, um, applications is maybe just, like, a subcommittee, so not taking up kind of time from the regular monthly meetings, which I think it has a lot in the past, having three people or, or some kind of assortment of this group that has a focused time period of reviewing applications and going through that and selecting it parallel to the regular meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
I like your idea of seeing, like, the Folk Festival kind of extend, but can that come from us? Can we say, hey, can you extend it longer? Or does that have to be their idea?
Well, maybe we just say, hey, we're changing this financing, you know, to do this and this, you know? Like, for example, we, we did a big study at our company, and we found that, like, five percent of the people who come and do a trip to Moab Venture Center do more than one trip, you know? And so we, we've kind of, we're changing our marketing to kind of go, instead of, um, you know, trying to get more people coming into trips, let's get those people that are here to do more trips, you know? And, and so I think that with events, it could be that, it could be that same thing, you know, how can we get people that are coming for these events to stay longer instead of trying to attract new people to, to come in?
Yeah, and that's totally in line with the state's new tourism direction, the red and roll stuff. You know, trying to get repeat visitation, trying to extend the length of stay, because that's actually more sustainable. It's less impact per dollar. It's, uh, or excuse me, more dollar per impact, I guess you'd say. It's your changing sheets and hotel rooms less often than if you have one guest every other day. Um, and that's the kind of direction that I think, if we can kind of get the county to sign on to, like, if, if we are doing tourism promotion, it's gonna be this more quality visitation, and these are the metrics that we're trying to boost specifically, rather than occupancy, trying to, like, number of nights stayed. Um, yeah, and that's the, the safe direction's going, and I think that's a place that we can go that is, you know, balanced with all of the, all of the kind of various perspectives on what our department can, can't do. Uh, it is two until the hour, someone just really quickly mentioned these two things, food for thought. With the, the local business advertising grant, so this is fifty-five grand to support small kind of mom and pop tourism shops, maybe new businesses, with some marketing dollars. Brought this up at the business summit yesterday, had some really good feedback on this. Um, this would be another kind of to be designed and to be launched, but I think this is a great program. I think we should talk more about this and design it. Um, and then this kind of idea of doing, um, kind of thinking about how Moab, Science Moab is doing a science-certified program with guides and outfitters, and, and using that as a starting point to figure out if we can't put together some kind of educational curriculum for local businesses that's best practices across the board. Um, without doing too much, going too wide, you know? You, you, or you set up with us a two-hour time for your kind of management staff and everybody you've got going on, that kind of fits in your schedule to learn some, the best, what do, what do people, what do you tell people when they ask about biological soil crust? And this is what the OHV regulations are, is that timed entry works, or something like that, that's narrow and focused and effective. And as a result, you get a cool design sticker that goes on your window, that's your Discover Moab certified, or something like that. And then you get a priority listing on our website. Uh, so it's free, everybody can do it, unfairly treating anybody. And, um, there's kind of a perk in which that, you know, if you're looking for our website, that, say, well, these folks are following the best practices of what our community thinks visitors should be known about. Um, so I'm really excited about that, but again, something that hasn't been scoped out, and then this kind of paid for by TRT thing. If we're doing event grants, it should be really clear that this event is getting paid for by TRT, especially if it's like the Summer Concert Series. Like, I should be going up there, or we should be going up there introducing that, like, where I think fifty percent of the funding for the Summer Concert Series. So it's like, that, not that Cassie's, like, intentionally doing anything like that, but I think it's an opportunity to do local PR education saying, you know, this is coming back to us, it's not just going to happen. Anyway, five o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yah, yah, yah.
You had two big days, boy, yesterday.
Oh, my God. Yeah, I'm gonna sleep for twenty hours, I think. Um, I don't think this.
No.
Did the call switch or something?
Turned.
Thanks, Daniel and Chanel.
We always say.
Have a good day.
Have a good evening.